Good evening, I call to order this special meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council and ask this district attorney, call and roll please.
Councilmember Light?
Here.
Councilmember Clark?
Here.
Councilmember Bessie?
Here.
Councilmember Montgomery?
Here.
Councilmember Burke?
Here.
Councilmember Adam?
Here.
Councilmember McIntosh?
Here.
And Councilmember Montgomery?
No.
Oh, Taylor?
Taylor.
Councilmember Taylor is present.
(laughing). Sorry about that.
Councilmembers, as you know, we've been working hard for a couple of months, actually longer than that, and working on a package of bond, potential bond issues that would address unmet capital needs across the city of Winston-Salem. Tonight, hopefully, we can come together informally, if the council was ready, to endorse the list that the city manager and assistant city manager will present to us and talk about next steps. Let me just turn it over to City Manager Garrett to walk us through that.
Thank you, Mayor Jones, members of the city council. As you recall, last month, the mayor and city council reviewed a preliminary list of capital needs. After that meeting, Assistant Manager Ben Rao and myself, we met with each elected official to further review those many potential projects. We have refined that list down, and in a moment, Mr. Rao will walk you through a revised $175 million potential list that could be funded with a two-and-a-half cent tax increase. We have also prepared a citywide, which you'll see right here, map, as well as ward maps that are at your places, showing all the projects on that $175 million list. It is important to note that this is, although a very important piece of our budget, is only one way that we address community and city needs. We also have an annual operating budget. We also have other capital sources that we use to address things. This is not the only way that we, as you know, that we deal with constituent needs and critical needs. It's just one major way. Mr. Rao is also going to review two other things that you requested. You'll see that the operating impact that we're projecting, which is very important that we see, if we build it, how much it's going to cost each year to maintain it, as well as, just for your information, we provided a list of what we spent the funds from the 2000 bond referendum, the last time the city had a bond referendum, 14 years ago, what those funds were spent on. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Rao.
Ben?
Good evening, Mayor Jones, members of the city council.
Good evening.
First, just want to give you an overview of the potential $175 million package. It breaks down between community and economic development, public safety, recreation, and transportation. That's the general obligation bond portion of that. So, community and economic development represents about $35 million of the package, public safety, $31 million, recreation, $30 million, $850,000, transportation, $60 million, $650,000. That represents about 90 percent of the $175 million package. The largest portion of that is in transportation. In addition, as we discussed at the meeting on February 24th, we're also proposing funding for the MC Penn Junior Convention Center for renovations there, about $17.5 million. That would be financed through limited obligation bonds, and that totals $17.5 million. So, that accounts for the full $175 million package that we'll be discussing tonight. The next several slides go through each of these service areas, and so I'll just briefly describe each of the projects that are in the potential package. The first one there, economic development sites and infrastructure, $20 million. That would represent investments in potential business, park sites, including grading, other infrastructure improvements, water sewer line extension. And there, the three locations that potentially could be targeted would be Brookwood Business Park, Union Cross Business Park, and potentially the redevelopment of Whittaker Park. Our experience over the years has shown that investment in these types of sites do lead to increased jobs and increased investment in our tax base. The next project is housing and neighborhood development, $6 million. That includes home buyers assistance, includes housing production, and neighborhood revitalization efforts like investments in public infrastructure. The next one is the transforming urban residential neighborhoods, $4 million.
Excuse me, Ben, would you prefer questions as we go through these segments? Councilmember Montgomery had a question about the economics.
Yeah, I didn't know if you wanted to wait or go ahead and ask the question.
Let's go through, if we can just do the, like, the community and economic development segment, and then we'll come back and see for questions on that one, and then we'll move on to the next. Is that okay?
Okay. The next project is the transforming urban residential neighborhoods, project $4 million. This differs from the housing neighborhood development project in the sense that it's more focused on housing rehabilitation and providing additional funding for rehabilitation of housing, particularly in the neighborhood revitalization strategy area. The proposed program requires that the housing be located in that area, that it also is, there's an active neighborhood association in the targeted neighborhood, and that there is some leverage of private dollars. The next project is downtown development with a special focus potentially on commercial plaza, $3 million, and that would include commercial and residential development within the downtown area, as well as further development of commercial plaza, perhaps the development of performance space, a public garden, and perhaps some parking. And then finally, the revitalizing urban commercial area, RUKA projects, $2 million. The council currently identifies 18 areas. We've provided funding for eight, so this project would either provide additional funding to those existing eight locations or provide funding for future phases of RUKA. So, that accounts for the $35 million proposed for community and economic development.
Questions in this section. Montgomery?
On the housing slash neighborhood development ones, and I know you went through that list of things in terms of it being used for, but have we ever, and particularly, many around state will know that specifically, particularly talk about affordable housing? And although we may allocate dollars specifically in housing and neighborhood development, how, if any way, can we specify use particularly around affordable housing and assist with affordable housing? Because if you're looking at any new development, the only way it's going to be affordable is if you're helping to buy down costs of development, and without that type of infusion of money, you don't see affordable housing happening.
Well, potentially, part of this particular project could be, you know, home buyers assistance. So, I guess, you know, assistance with the individual property owner versus perhaps the project. I think in the past, we provided second mortgage assistance with funding. I believe when we look back at the 2000 package, it included those types of, funded those types of uses.
I believe they were all in affordable housing uses in 2000. I think that would be the intent, to use it in those areas that are targeted where that assistance makes the difference.
Particularly, I'm talking not so much about the single family, but multifamily affordable housing units when it comes to apartment complexes and that nature. That's something commonly that I think we need to pay attention to, and I don't know how we include that in this portion, or if that's something in terms of allocating dollars, with the fact that some of the funds that we currently use for affordable housing, those funds are surely depleting and going out. So, how do we replace those funds to assist with those kind of projects?
It's a choice, this council. If I look at the last one, and the rental housing assistance, which was part of that referendum, was spent what was formerly Forest Ridge, as well as Orchard Creek Apartments. So, it'd be a choice to this council, but you could certainly, if you wanted to, you could designate upfront how much you wanted to earmark towards multifamily versus single.
All right. Because I know when you put it on this, you have to use them in those categories, and so wanting to make sure that you have that, we have the flexibility to do that.
Yeah, you do. Anything within the housing area.
The council can set whatever parameters they want to once they move forward to implementation. Dan?
Yeah. This may be getting too much to say off of this part of the presentation, but I am not yet certain that I understand the intent of how and where the $6 million in housing and neighborhood development would be used, and how that is distinct from the transforming urban residential neighborhoods. The term funding has to be geographically concentrated. Does the $6 million in the housing and neighborhood development have to be, you know, geographically concentrated?
No, I think right now, the way it's currently described, it doesn't have to be.
So, it would not be limited to exclusively the neighborhood revitalization strategy?
That's correct.
Very good. I wanted to confirm.
Jeff?
Going back to the turn project, and I'm still very fuzzy on the details, because I think a lot of them really haven't been set in stone or even flushed out all that much, but I guess if we're going to spend that kind of money on housing in neighborhoods, and it's not a geographic question, but I want to make sure that we're doing that in a sustainable way, so that we don't have to come back and be asked every so many years for more money to come back to the same neighborhoods to spend that money again. I think we need to think real long and hard about our strategies there.
Good points, and certainly, all these can be added to the parameters that we would use when we go forward, assuming these bonds are approved. All right, if there are no other questions on this segment, we'll move to the next one. Ben?
Public safety, that area, the proposed funding totals $31 million. The first project there is public safety center renovations, $10 million. That project would focus mainly on replacing the major systems in the public safety centers. That would include the mechanical systems like the HVAC, electrical, the life safety systems, like the fire alarm and security, and plumbing. So, really, those systems are now approaching the end of their useful lives, and this funding would be focused on replacing those systems. Next one is the Alexander Beatty Public Safety Training and Support Center, Phase Two, of the development of that facility, $7 million. That would develop the second floor, provide additional training space for the fire department, also provide space for our forensic services division and police, for them to move their crime lab to that location, and also to provide some additional storage space for evidence. The next two projects, the police district facilities, one, the proposed location is the Hainsball Boulevard, Jonestown Road area, almost $4 million for that project, and then the proposed district facility relocated in the University Parkway, North Point Boulevard area, almost $3.5 million for those two. Those amounts represent funding needed to construct the facilities. The council recently approved a budget amendment where we appropriated the remaining funding, the unspent funding from the indoor firearms training facility. Those funds would go towards the acquisition of these sites, so what would be in the proposed bond package would be the funding for construction. The next project is renovation of Fire Station Number Eight, located next to Wake Forest, $2,580,000 there. That will include the construction of two bays and separate bathroom facilities for female firefighters, almost a rebuild of that particular station. The Fire Station Number Seven renovation on Arbor Road would provide expanded living space, as well as a new garage and driveway, to make entry and exit of the station easier. Then, the police district facility, that has been approved for the Lucia Building, $1,584,000 there. Again, that is for construction or renovation of that site. We have now acquired that site. And then finally, renovation of Fire Station Number Nine, that would include construction of a new bay to expand the functionality of that fire station, build a house, different types of apparatus, as well as expanding the dormitory at that station.
Questions on public safety, Councilmember Burke?
Not a question. I think that the city manager should make a comment concerning the public safety renovations, why that is so important.
They're absolutely vital to our community. The public safety center, as Mr. Rao said, is 25, 26 years old, and as we say, it's used around the clock 24 hours a day. Currently, we are actually renting a chiller that's in the parking lot, taking up the chief's parking space, while we install some new equipment on the roof, but that's just one of many, many things that are just wearing out in the facility. And as part of that process of renovating that building, so we have more space, we're recommending, and this council has endorsed, creating the districts, the police districts, where we can increase our visibility of the officers out in the field, in the neighborhoods that they work in. It's very important.
I have a question on renovation of Number Eight. You're saying it's probably going to be almost like a total gutting and rebuilding there. Are we convinced that's the best location for that, if we're going to spend this amount of money? Chief, is that still a good location for Number Eight?
Thanks, good evening to the panel. That still is a good location. We have looked at alternate locations. We've also worked with Wake Forest in the past, trying to find different locations around the Wake Forest area, and have not been able to find one without looking at imminent domain. So, it's still a good location. It's probably more than a gutting because of the, I mean, the construction style of the station, that $2 million is probably more of redoing the station to be present day closed.
Thank you, Chief. All right, we'll move on to the next area then.
The next area is recreation. Total funding in that area is $30 million, $850,000. First project is Happy Hill Park renovations. A number of needs have been identified over the years. This funding would provide for renovations of the swimming pool, perhaps even the development of a spray ground at the park, provide expanded parking at the Sims Recreation Center, picnic shelters, and new playing fields. The intent is also to update the master plan that was developed for this park some years ago, so that we make sure that we are providing amenities that appeal to those in the community. Next project is the former quarry property park development, Phase One, $4 million. That funding would provide for the construction of a quarry overlook, for the construction of an amphitheater, shelters, boardwalk, really to make that more of an active park Next project, Salem Lake Park renovations, improvements Phase One. That project include, would fund the construction of a marina center, as well as improvements along the lakefront to support the activities of fishing and boating, as well as provide some additional restroom facilities, again, to really make that, improve that as a regional location. Winston Lake Park renovations, Phase One, $4 million there. The first phase would focus mainly on the development of an aquatic center. That would include a swimming pool, a lazy river, and spray grounds, as well as picnic shelters and other amenities in that location. Jamison Park development, $3 million. Basically, the funding there would help to make that Jamison Park more of an active park, constructing a picnic area, potential amphitheater, play fields, and improved parking, so that there'd be better access to the greenway there. And spray grounds, water spray grounds, it's been an area of focus here in recent years to look at our swimming pools and perhaps look to see if some might be candidates for conversion to spray grounds, or if nothing else, to at least construct spray grounds that are, might be more appealing to those in the community. This particular funding, $2 million, $50,000, would provide for the construction of eight spray ground facilities. Miller Park renovations and redevelopment, $2 million. This project would provide improvements in terms of providing benches and shelters, path improvements, and to correct some drainage issues that exist in Miller Park. Winston Lake Golf Course renovations, $1.5 million. This would continue the improvements that the council has already begun to fund. Right now, we currently have funding to replace the 19 greens at the golf course, as well as some of the, some of, a couple of the bridges. This particular project would replace the sand traps, relocate the driving range, construct two on-course restroom facilities, and provide improvements to the car paths. Sedg Garden Recreation Center Gymnasium, $1.3 million. That is to add on a gymnasium to the Sedg Garden Recreation Center. That is a facility that has been in demand by the residents in that area for some time, and so this funding would go towards the construction of that facility, provide for additional programming, perhaps even more sports leagues, those types of offerings. Hanes Park improvements, $1 million. That project would provide funding for the construction of a restroom at the park, as well as resurfacing of the track. The intent is for staff to do, to develop in-house a new master plan for Hanes Park, and so the remaining funding would provide the amenities that would be identified through that new master planning process. Parkland acquisition, based on some of the feedback that the manager and I did receive, I think the council identified a need for the acquisition of new land to develop new parks, and so there's now $1 million included in the proposed package for the acquisition of land. Kimberley Park improvements, $400,000. This would focus on a lot of the major maintenance needs at Kimberley Park, renovating the swimming pool, the shelter, and the tennis courts at Kimberley Park. Parkland Pool, tennis courts, $400,000. Again, this one is focused on a lot of the major maintenance needs at Parkland Pool, and the tennis courts renovations and resurfacing for those facilities. In fact, a number of the remaining projects here, as I go through them, that really are focused on major maintenance. I think part of the feedback that we got from the city council was that we needed to go ahead and start programming some funding to address some of those major maintenance needs at our parks. So, the next one there, Brown and Douglas Recreation Center and Piney Grove Park improvements, $350,000. That would provide for security improvements, as well as other amenities that the Recreation Department learns about from dialogue with those in that area. Continuing on to the next slide, Blum Park improvements, they're $250,000. That would include improvements to the shelter, to the playground, improved lighting, and roadway resurfacing. Fairview Park renovations, mainly would focus on renovating the shelter for that particular park. Bowen Park restroom renovation, there, $150,000. Recreation facility lighting improvements and tennis courts at Carver High School, $150,000. Again, an identified need for improving the lighting there, and as we've identified and documented in the capital resource document, there is a need to resurface a number of our courts, including the one here. And then finally, Hobby Park improvements, that would provide funding for renovations of the shelter and the parking lot at that facility.
Any questions about recreation? Move on to the next one. Transportation?
This category totals $60 million, $650,000. The first project there is Union Station, $18.3 million. This amount of funding would provide for the development of that facility and that area. It does not include the construction of the train platform, but it does include the development of Union Station, as I believe has been presented to council, to really help with revitalizing that area along Martin Luther King Jr. Drive. The next project is street resurfacing, $15 million, $250,000 there. At this point, no projects have been identified, but what that amount of funding would provide is 203 miles of new centerline mile resurfacing. So, based on the current cost of a centerline mile, we think that we could resurface 203 miles. Sidewalk construction repairs, that includes the construction of new sidewalks, as well as repairs, and also the installation of ramps in order to meet Americans with Disabilities Act requirements. The total there is $8 million. Again, specific locations will be identified by city council. Metalar Drive widening. This particular project would widen Metalar Drive from Country Club Road to the segment that, just before you get to Robin Hood Road, where the road has already been widened to support the development on that end of Metalar Drive. Business 40 corridor improvements, this is one that has been added to the list, $3 million there. That would provide improvements in the segment from US 52 to Peters Creek Parkway. It would include the installation of streetlights and also other aesthetics along that route. Concrete base streets rehabilitation, $2.7 million. The concrete base streets that we have in the city, that we're experiencing some erosion of the concrete base, and so this project would provide for the rehabilitation of those streets. Child pedestrian safety projects, the Safe Routes to Schools program has identified a number of locations where some improvements can be made to provide more walking and biking opportunities for students, more connectivity to schools, and so this project would provide $2 million for those types of improvements. Polo Road corridor improvements, this, the $2 million there, would provide funding for improvements from University Parkway to Indiana Avenue, and that would include the construction of new sidewalks, as well as potentially a linear park along that corridor. And then next one is STPDA bicycle and pedestrian projects, $1.8 million. This would include additional funding to invest in greenways and bike paths, and potentially we could receive state or federal funding that would help cover perhaps 80 percent of the cost of some of those locations. Then, greenways, $1 million there. We added $1 million additionally for greenways. This is to provide additional funding to help us with expediting the process for constructing greenways. The Public Works Committee was presented with some options about how we can potentially accelerate the construction of greenways, which would perhaps involve the city taking on more of the cost for design and other types of studies. This probably would provide the funding to be able to do that, to explore those acceleration options. And then finally, Old Salem Infrastructure, $1 million. This would provide funding for rehabilitation of the sidewalks in Old Salem, where we've seen the roots of trees that are starting to penetrate the sidewalk, as well as potentially other streetscape improvements like landscaping and street lighting.
Ms. Adams?
Yes, Mr. Rao, on the street resurfacing in light of the weather that we've had this winter, and Mr. Turner, I'm wondering if the, don't we have a list or something of streets that we had potentially said that we were going to resurface or were in line? Didn't we put together something that's already in place or something, Public Works people?
Every year.
Yeah, but we have a list presently now, do we not? But what I'm asking is, how relevant is that list in light of all of the potholes and the streets falling apart, and as the weather warms, it's already known around the country that there are other issues that are getting ready to happen to our streets? How would that fit into this? Would we reshuffle the deck, Chair of Public Works in your committee, and say, will we go out and re-inspect those streets and see how they stack up compared to the ones that may move to the top of the list for safety purposes and things?
My understanding, yeah, thank you. My understanding of the process is that Streets has a rolling inspection and updates the list annually of the priorities, so that different segments do, in fact, move around depending on changes in their circumstances.
So, we would probably, as we go forward in the next month or so, probably get an update to that based on what discovery and the data people are telling us, scientists. They're saying that within the next two months, we should be able to see streets in cities, the effects of the weather will begin to show from the plowing and the temperatures, so...
I would defer to Mr. Turner on the precise timetable he anticipates for that update information.
Mr. Turner, could you comment on that?
Certainly, we'd be able to bring something within the next two months before council's asked to vote on the final package.
Thank you.
Good. Councilmember Montgomery?
Two questions. One in reference, again, can you hit me again on business 40 corridor improvement? Can you say that one more time?
Yes, sir. This project would focus on the segment from US 52 West to Peters Creek Parkway. The improvements would include replacement of the streetlights along that corridor, as well as other aesthetic improvements that might be identified through the work of the Creative Corridors Coalition or our city committee that is charged with that work.
And you hit where I was going with that. These, this is things that is above what the state would normally do on these things, and so these are additional things that are taking place with that, as well as we've already looked at other areas that we're looking to support the same thing. So, just wanted to, because some people may look at that and say, well, the state should be taking care of that, but this is above that. And then the other was on, it was street resurfacing, road widenings, and extensions, and I see this, that extensions is altogether something that's no longer even a part of transportation. So, we felt that that was not something we wanted to look at in this, in this package.
We heard very little demand from council and citizens for road extensions. We, we heard very little demand from council and citizens for road extensions compared to street resurfacing and maintaining what we have.
Yeah, Councilwoman Light, then Councilwoman Bessie?
This really does refer to what Councilmember Montgomery was asking about. Why pick the $175 million package instead of the $200 million? It would make less than a half cent difference in the tax rate. When we could, and the main thing that's left out of the 175 that is, is in the 200, would, is that excess money required for the widening and extensions? Could we not go with 200 million and use that extra money to increase the number of lane miles that are resurfaced? Because if I'm not mistaken, we said that we have about 2,000 lane miles in the city. And we are only going to be able to resurface with this line, how many?
203.
203.
So a tenth.
A tenth.
I think it maybe, I'll check, I think it's...
That's full miles.
Full miles. I thought, I thought that was 200...
Centerline miles.
It's 200 centerlines.
Is it? Okay. So 20%. But still, as I say, you know, that seems to be something that is very much on the minds of, of the citizens of Winston-Salem, or the, I've been told I should be ashamed to be the council member of a street like Academy Street. So I'm ashamed, that's why, no. At any rate, was there any reasoning behind choosing the lower figure and not trying to extend the amount of resurfacing?
I guess the reasoning staff had was just trying to come up with something, someone in the middle. But obviously, that's a choice council could make for an extra half cent on the tax rate. You could, you could go to the full 200 million.
Councilwoman Bessie, then Councilwoman Clark?
Yeah.
Excuse me, Councilwoman McIntosh, excuse me.
A couple of comments. I'm a little bit worried about the degree to which we're talking, we're focusing on street resurfacing, because there's an enormous amount of demand there. That's also something that happens every year, every season, you know, the, the roads are gonna get torn up. If we're looking at a bond package, it may be the kind of thing we put out once every 10 years. We need to be looking first at longer-term improvements that are gonna last more than a season. And, you know, in that regard, the, the one that particularly I'm concerned didn't get enough emphasis in, in this proposed redraft is the new sidewalk construction. And that's, that's an average of a million per ward there. And I know of at least one project in the southwest ward that residents along the street are hollering for it, that's estimated 1.2 million. And that's just one project. And there are, are three or four of that priority level in, in my ward. I'd like to see additional funding go into the, into the sidewalk construction category. So that we, no, we can't get to all of them, can't get to everything. But I think looking at sort of long-term impact projects that, in the transportation area, that's gonna be frankly, more important to general public livability and safety than, than an extra lane on a couple of, a couple of streets, a couple of roads. And, you know, just to make a note on sort of the, the total package level, I worry that we need to not go so high on the, on the tax rate impact that we jeopardize passage of the package. Because we do have countervailing pressures. We've got people who are hollering for all the projects. But we also have people that are opposed to any adjustment ever in their tax rate. And we need, if we're going to see a, a package pass, we need to make sure that the overall package stays 50% plus on, in, in view of the voters on the, we are willing to back this. So, yeah, I, I, I think the 175 general level was a reasonable compromise. I might shuffle some of the numbers a bit within the total.
Thank you. Ms. McIntosh?
First of all, let me just say, I'm, I'm glad to see that we don't have road extensions and widening on here as a priority. I'm hoping that we have some recognition that it costs us over time a lot more money to, to maintain the city as it gets further away, and that our sunk costs are here, and that we need to develop in that respect. Second question was, is that on the Business 40 Corridor Improvements, which I'm viewing as a creative corridors pitch in essentially, and also Old Salem, these to me are long-term investments. I'm wondering, is that enough? Is that enough money to put into two things that are, that affect us and are going to affect us for a very long period of time? We only get one swing at the creative corridors thing ever, ever, you know, in our lives. And, and at Old Salem, I just don't know if that number is what they view as being able to get them over the hump and make them more sustainable.
Can you comment on that?
The, I, we, Mr. Turner and myself met with representatives of the creative corridors. They, they proposed three to five million as the city, city amount to pay for the betterments, the landscaping, the lighting. And then they plan with their capital campaign, which they will start in 2015, to raise the money for the, the major public art amenities that would, they want on the bridges, the archways. So it's that kind of combination, but they seemed comfortable with a $3 million figure. For Old Salem, I'll let, let Mr. Turner talk.
Well, the infrastructure improvements that we've talked about, which are addressing the problems with the trees and the sidewalk conflicts, we think this is a fairly good value, or appropriate price. It also includes additional street lighting for the Old Salem area, consistent with the aesthetic and the historical look for the community.
Councilwoman Clark?
A couple of things. One, I agree with Mr. Bessie that I think we have to be careful that, obviously, there's more demands, but you don't get anything if it doesn't pass. So I think we gotta balance that. Second comment on the street resurfacing, I think that is the most important thing in here. Greg, how much do we spend a year on resurfacing now?
Honestly, I don't recall. We have three categories of spending, but it's nowhere near this.
Yep. Well, again, we, we will continue to have that in the budget, but we are so far behind. And obviously, this was a very tough winter, and hopefully, we don't have them every year. But I, I think we need a, a shot in the arm, a one-time, let's kind of try to get caught up, because what we've been spending in the last five, 10 years has, has not kept us up.
Good point. Councilwoman Montgomery?
Just a, a question or comment I have been, when you look at the, the street resurfacing or the sidewalk construction and repairs, particularly in our areas where you have the intersections of city roads and state roads, how can we work with our counterparts at the state to have the best bang for our bucks in some of the areas that we're gonna be investing some of these dollars in these roads? If we look at that list, and we know we have areas that we can, we improve our, our portions of streets, I know the state's response is always, they don't have the additional money to repair. And I guess if you have as much street as the state has, it's even that much more to work. But our allocations here locally, I know we have people who serve on our, on boards and represents here, but I just would want us to see how we can work that together. Because some of my worst, worst roads, we have no, no control over. Like, if you look at the intersection, Martin Luther King on, from New Walker Town Road to Cameron, your car is, is going from side to side because they put these...
Millions.
Piece of pavers on both sides of the street, which, in my opinion, made the word, the road worse than it was. And so we have no control at, at all in terms of that investment, and just seeing how we can, if we do ours. And people have no idea which road is a state road and which road is a city road. And so they say you investing, but you're not improving our streets.
We'll coordinate, if the package passes, obviously. We'll coordinate with NC DOT. We do it already for the normal resurfacing projects. And so we'll make sure they're aware of what we're looking at when we bring a package back to council for the specific city streets that we'd be proposing to resurf, be resurfaced with the bond package. Obviously, they have limited resources, but we'll work with them as much as possible, see if they can coordinate their roads with our roads, so that if the road changes from a city designation to a state designation, that if we're gonna resurface it, that we try to get them to resurface their court.
All right. Move on then to the public assemblies.
Last category is public assembly facilities. And this project, this funding would provide dollars for renovations to the Ben Convention Center. Last year, there was a study done on the, on the Convention Center, a facility assessment, a competitive facility assessment, a cost-benefit analysis of potential improvements. And that study identified $23.9 million in improvements to the Convention Center. An internal staff team looked over those improvements and identified 17.5 million dollars of improvements that basically were, felt that would have the greatest impact on the marketability of the Convention Center, and hopefully have a greater impact generally on the economy and on downtown. So this would be, so the 17.5 million dollars would provide funding for those specific improvements.
Councilwoman Burke?
Maybe I should make a comment here. If we're gonna encourage tourism and having conferences in this city, then we're gonna have to bring our convention center up to what people expect. And I do feel that this is something that's needed. We're in competition with other places when we're trying to get the conferences. So I would hope that the council and the mayor would understand this.
The two and a half cents, oh, I'm sorry, Jeff.
There was a, there was a $24 million figure floating around for Convention Center. What's the difference between that amount of expenditure and what we're proposing here? Do you, do you know?
The, the study had identified $24 million in, in total renovations. The internal team basically pared that down to 17.5 million. The difference really represents, well, the, basically, the renovations that were not included in the 17.5 million basically were exterior improvements to the facility, glazing, developing parts of the Convention Center exterior for retail shops, that kind, those kinds of improvements. Also, what they call kind of back of the house improvements in the kitchen and those areas that are not visible to potential clients and users of the facility, that I think the feeling was that we could, we could still operate just fine without those particular improvements. So most of the focus is on what improvements could be made that really would enhance the marketability of, of the Convention Center.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
And actually, my point kind of goes also to, to that portion. Looking at the totality of the study that was done, that went to that, there's a $24 million range, even if we keep in this 17.5 million dollars in this, are there any ways for us to look at additional funding at some later timeframe to be able to do those additional things that, you know, just enhances what we're already looking to do? Because I think those things are good things, they just might not fit into the number we're looking at. But how can we look at potentially in the future, looking at additional revenue sources to, to do that type of work? That's something I'd be interested in, in seeing and knowing.
Councilwoman Adams?
Yes, one of the conversations that was had with me was, and I've made it very clear to the, the Tourism Board Director, and the Convention Center and the hotel managers, I said that if we don't do the outside of the building, then to me, you know, when people come to, the people that come to look at the buildings before their group decides to get a contract, people do that. They go online, they look at the building. Most of us that travel and go to hotels and resorts, golf courses, we go online and we look at it and determine whether we're going or not. I personally think it's very important that we do something to the outside of that Convention Center. The bridge across the street, I made the comment that if we're doing creative corridors, we needed to do a creative corridor from the parking deck to the Convention Center. Because it's a major place that people travel under when they come into our city. And you just got this walk across, concrete structure. And the way the Convention Center, it might have worked 20, 30 years ago, but we have got to do a better job with uplights, and colored lights, and trees, and, and landscape. And Mr. Ryle, you might want to go back and look at that one some kind of way. I don't know how we do it, whether we get with some partners here in the city to try to make this happen. But I think it's very important that if we look at the other arenas in the cities that we're competing against now in North Carolina, and Virginia, and South Carolina, then we're behind. We're very behind. And as Mr. Clark said, we gotta give a shot in the arm on some of these things that generate revenue. You know, I know we want all of the things in the communities that we want, but we also have to keep in mind our citizens in this council, as we know, we still have to generate revenue to pay the bills or to do other improvements within the city. So I would take that, we need to go back and look at this one and see what we can do. We, we might can't do it all, as Councilmember Montgomery said, but I think that front, that frontal view that you see coming out of hotels and that you drive by on Fifth and Cherry and Marshall, that something needs to be done there with the, with the new store that's coming down there. With all of this other stuff, the new restaurant across the street from the Convention Center and some other things that are coming, I think we might want to look at how that looks down there in that part of town to help even spur some more development.
Yes, ma'am. That just has a point of clarification, that the 17.5 million does include some exterior work, basically repairing and replacing some of the masonry. But some of those other additional aesthetic improvements that you, that you mentioned are not included. Part of the 17.5 million would fund basically building out some, some meeting rooms on the south end of the building, and basically replacing the sunken garden that is there. And so bringing that out to, building that out to, to Fifth, to Fifth Street, which I think would improve the, the front appearance of, of the building.
Mayor, we could also look at some additional wow factor type things, lighting, landscaping. We're already working on the project for the alleyway that connects to the Mass General Stores, was mentioned. And so I think there are probably some low-hanging fruit that we could do that would make it more...
Very good. Thank you. Because if you need some lights, I got some at the house that we can use.
Councilwoman Light?
That is exactly the point I was going to make, that I think we have to do something to make that visual impression of the, of the Convention Center striking. It's certainly not now. And so if we can find some sort of other funding, that would, that would really be great.
Councilwoman Montgomery, and Councilwoman Burke?
Yeah. Again, I think everybody said the same thing. You go into Raleigh, and as soon as you're driving in, you see from a distance the aesthetic view of it. We can't build Raleigh's Convention Center here, and we're not gonna try to, but it's just the aesthetics of that. But particularly in the inside of the Convention Center now, the naming of rooms in, within the Convention Center currently, how is that done? Is that tied to any sponsorship or anything like that? Because I'm just saying to help, can we tie that to potentially find some additional revenue to help do some of those things in terms of some namings of rooms in, of the building?
That's certainly something...
Montgomery's going.
He can afford us.
Absolutely.
But I, I just think that, that may be a way of bringing in some of our business partners to...
Good. Councilwoman Burke?
I wasn't gonna say anything about this, but I, I'm gonna say it now. When you talk about naming of rooms, I want you to know, and Mr. Kiger's here, and he'll understand, because we've had some communication, we know that a company owns the hotel and their involvement with the Convention Center. Well, they had renovated the Marriott, and I was in there with someone, and what did I notice? They had put one university name, Wake Forest University. And it was stated because the owner happened to attend Wake Forest. Well, that was, you, did you attend Wake Forest, Mr. McIntosh? Uh huh. But, but you're not, you're not the owner, you understand. And, and I just felt that that really wasn't the right thing with these. I said, we have Salem College, Winston-Salem State University. So I spoke to Mr. Swinson, who is the manager, because he came to my table to talk with me, and I told him how disappointed I was. He said the owner is the one, he finished there. And I said, you will be hearing from him. And of course, I called the city manager, he heard from me. In the meantime, Mr. Kiger and I had a conversation, because we'd had our TDA meeting, and we didn't want to bring that up. And he also has spoken to the owner. If we're gonna put tax dollars in facilities, then we must be fair in how we put certain names in the places. And of course, you're talking about buying names, what you're talking about, if someone wanted to put something, it would be those who could afford to be able to do that. So that's important. But what I was gonna say, you were talking about the walkway. Well, that was a mistake from the time it was built, because they did not even, if you're coming out with your formal gown or something, it's so cold when you walk through, that little air space up in there, the freeway. So it was not really the best, best in the way of... So it was not really the best, best in the way in which we did it. So this may give us an opportunity to improve it. And you know, I've talked about public art. I've initiated all of that, so some public art and things that we can involve ourselves.
Ben, I assume that we got feedback and input from Mr. Geiger and his organization regarding the prioritization of this expenditure.
Yes, he was involved in that process.
Any other questions about public assembly? All right.
So that sums up the potential $175 million package. A $175 million would require a 2.5 cent increase in the property tax to be able to retire that debt over time. I just wanted to provide you an updated projection of what that would look like. So looking at the blue line, we would build up the fund balance and then as we started to issue more of the debt and incur more of the debt payments, that fund balance would be drawn down and then in 20, about 2024, 2025, kind of would bottom out at about, maybe about four or five million dollars, which is above our reserve target, which is to have $2 million in reserves. So the two and a half cent increase does enable us to retire the debt and maintain the reserves in the debt service fund.
You know, Lee, when we go to the voters, they'll be, the voters will be asked to vote on the 157 as soon as council does that. When they look at that, that the, the bond thing on, on the ballot would basically say authorize the approval of these items and a tax increase of up to, it's not going to be the 2.5 on, on that ballot, it will be 2 cents or 2.2.
Right. It'll be for each order. It'll be split out by, by orders, I believe, because you're going to have, if, if we go with this list, you'll have four different orders, one for recreation, one for transportation, one for housing and economic development, and one for public safety. So each one would be separate. So it wouldn't be two and a, whatever that.
2.1 or something like that. So a voter would not be voting on full two and a half, but we know that in order to service all that debt, we'd say clearly it takes two. Dan, do you have a point?
An overview point. A department.
Councilman Burke.
I'm going to have to leave, so I need to make this comment. I want to commend the city manager for hearing what the elected official said about the bond. I said it's also important whenever you present something, that you can show the taxpayers throughout this community that we are concerned about the total city. So he went back to the drawing board with Mr. Rau. And what you presented to us that we got over the weekend, it's very good. It shows that what we have looked at, how we can show fairly across this board, that all areas are important. And that is, and when you want a tax, a taxpayer to pass or to look at something, we have to make sure we can convince them that it is a fair project and that we are concerned. And I want to also emphasize something the city manager said, even though we're looking at this bond, we still have funds to do other things in this community that we also have a budget.
Good point. Councilman Montgomery, you have.
It's just a question actually to point that you just made, Mayor, is this is my first time and several others on council in terms of actually going through the process. As you stated, what will be, what voters will vote on will not be one simple measure, it'll be four different ones in that process.
That's correct.
And so if, so potentially one part of the bond could fail and the other parts could be successful.
All right. So, Mr. Manager, where do we, where do we go from here?
Mr. Rau's got a few more.
Oh, he's got more. I'm sorry, Ben. I didn't mean to cut you off. I'm paying you overtime.
Kind of as a follow-up from that slide, what would be the impact on, on tax bills of a two and a half cent increase associated with a $175 million package? And I just wanted to give, provide some, some different property values, 50,000, 100,000, 150,000, and what the, the annual impact would be. So for a $50,000 household, it would be $12.50 annual impact, then $25 for a $100,000 house, and $37.50 for a property valued at $150,000. Next slide, in response to some requests from council members, want to provide some estimates on, on the potential operating impacts of some of the projects in this potential package. And we've, we have here mainly our, our public safety and recreation projects. The first one is Union Station, and what we're estimating there right now is the annual, the net annual operating impact of about $200,000. So we provide the, the net annual operating impact, which means that we're considering any potential new revenues that the facility could generate as well as any new costs. And then the potential impact on staffing. So kind of bottom line, what we're estimating at this point is a total of about $1,003,000 in operating impact, five full-time positions, 22 part-time positions.
And Councilman Light, you had a question earlier that I got to come back to you on.
Oh, no, that actually, it was answered.
Okay, great. Mr. Bestie.
Yes. The facilities that you showed no position increase, but an increase in the net annual operating impact, such as Union Station, what kinds of spending are, are we talking about there?
It would mainly be utilities and, and maintenance. And we might contract out some of the, some of the maintenance work, so it would require actually a dedication or creation of a, of a city position. And mainly utilities and maintenance for those facilities.
Councilman Adams.
Yes, thank you. Does the impact include for the listing of added employees, the benefits and everything?
Yes, it does. The total cost of, of the positions.
And I guess the next thing I might would want to see, and maybe it's already here, but I don't see it. What is going to be the estimated revenue we think we're going to make from some of these projects that are revenue driven? If I'm going to hire 16 part-time people to run a park, am I charging fees on anything? And if not, I mean, fishing something, how are we going to offset it? I mean, and if we're not going to see any revenue, you know, I'd like to know that.
That, that column, the net annual operating impact, does have some assumptions in there about new revenues that would be generated by the facilities. I'd be happy to read.
Break it out, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Montgomery.
That was, that, my answer, my question probably would be answered in that same, whatever you present with that breakout. Because it was specific, going back to the Union Station one, I just wondered, understanding whether or not that takes into consideration space potentially leased and that kind of stuff in that, that process.
It does not, so we'd have to consider that.
Councilman Bestie.
Yeah. One of the sort of continuing difficulties we've had in implementing capital projects has been bottlenecks in real estate and engineering. And I wondered if any consideration's been given to additional staff positions in order to actually keep these projects moving at once, assuming they're approved.
Good point. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Turner must have been talking to you, but we actually, I asked Mr. Turner last week to, to, to put together very specific flow charts for every single project from beginning to end, and I think, believe it or not, he's almost done. But our, what I want to do is make sure that we have enough resources, both internal and contracting, to, to expedite all of these projects. We're going to try, if council approves this list, we will try to do as much design work this summer and fall that we can so that it, once the bonds pass, we can be literally shovel-ready. But he is looking with engineering, with, with our city engineer about what additional resources, both full-time and contractual, we might need to make sure that all these projects are shepherded along very efficiently, but also quickly.
Okay. And, and one other suggestion, one of the best ideas that I picked up at the NLC conference in Washington this year was the idea of a citizen oversight committee for bond spending implementation, overseeing the actual development and implementation of the projects approved by the bonding. I'd suggest that we develop a plan for that and announce that as part of the discussion of the, of the proposed referendum itself to help bolster confidence in the public that the, the funds will be spent as intended and in a timely, efficient manner and in a transparent manner.
We've used that before and I think it's very effective, very effective use of it. Councilman Montgomery.
Mr. Geiger, you said something that rung a bell when you were talking about designing. You said contracting. It's specific, as we look at $175 million being spent in the community over the next several years, potentially if this is approved by the voters, that's a question of contracting, whether it's contracting on professional service, contracting in building and doing work consistently. I've had conversations with you and I know others have, particularly in making sure, one, that local individual companies are benefiting from these bond dollars that come through, whether it's a construction company, a design firm, or making sure that we're spending as much money locally as we possibly can. And I think that if we can also tie that as a part of what we're saying, the message that we're going to spend this, these dollars here from, from design and construction and all that, we want to spend these dollars within the walls of our community, I think that's another, another positive point. But making sure that we're ready to do that. I know there's some concerns, particularly in making sure that we are equitable currently in some of our processes and making sure that we're being attentive to that need.
You're right, Councilman Montgomery, and at the moment, we're working on, on two avenues for that. One, we're going to bring forward a recommendation on disparity studies so that we can identify if we, if we can set our goals for minority and women hire. And number two, I've been working with staff on whatever the law will allow us to do as far as bi-local, where we have discretion. I've heard loud and clear, we want to take care of home, we want to take care of creating jobs here in Winston-Salem, how important that is to the mayor and council. So we'll be bringing that forward as well. And again, anything and everything that we, we can do, I intend to do to make sure that we, we spend this money here.
All right. Ben?
The last slide of this discussion, the next steps, just wanted to point, just let you know that there is an appendix behind this slide that does provide the accounting of the projects that were completed, that were funded by the 2000 bond referendum. So a number of street widening projects, street resurfacing, sidewalk construction, downtown infrastructure investments, capital improvements. So that's available too.
Very good. Manager?
Next step, so what we would propose is that we use the month of April as a pretty intensive community outreach and feedback time. We would schedule community meetings in each ward. We would create a separate webpage. Marketing and communications would produce a five-minute video. We would use all of our other social media and citizen feedback methods to solicit input on, on the bonds. Each one of those community meetings, we would show the video, have some chance for question, and then have breakout areas so that a citizen could go see all of the transportation projects and ask the transportation people those questions. The same with recreation. Lot of information that we want to generate out to the community and then come back to this council and mayor in, in early May to see if you're, you're ready to go forward to start that official process for bond referendum.
Any thoughts about the next steps, folks?
I just, I think it'd also be particularly some of the dollars that we may spend, it may be well to look at some of those locations. I know we're looking at wards to, to have them in different wards, but it may be well to use locations that may benefit from investment as some of the host sites to, to hold some of those meetings so that they can, can benefit, whether it's the recreation centers or places like that, to be able to benefit just as a.
We will be, I think we've already started, we're reaching out to each of you to also work on those locations and schedules because April starts tomorrow.
Councilmembers, what I, what I'm senses here is that, notwithstanding Councilmember Lights, the comments about, you know, can we do a little more, that this is about the right size that folks are feeling about, two and a half cents, get a lot done. Still, there's another probably 500 million that we could do if we, if we thought we could do it, but we're not asking for a formal approval tonight, but I'm, I'm sensitive that we're feeling pretty good about the, the right package and the right mix out there. Bestie?
Yeah, I, I agree with the caveat that we would like to see us find a little more money from sidewalks. I think that's not going to go far enough.
And that, I'm just saying, within the broad categories that we're talking about, the right, because we will, we'll discuss all the specific layouts of that probably in May and do.
After you get the citizen feedback, that could easily be adjusted within transportation.
Yeah, I certainly agree with that.
But understand, if the bottom line stays the same, you change somebody's gang, someone has to lose.
Gotcha. All right. Without objection, then, we will close this discussion and look forward to the input from the citizens as we finalize this package. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
See y'all in the morning.
Yeah, see y'all early morning. Good to eight o'clock.